Good morning, welcome to the work session for Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors. Roll call please, Ms. Shaw.
Ramp.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Kurttenbach.
Here.
Hall.
Here. Item number one, agenda received, proposed or recommended?
Um.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Item number two, work session, discussion of possible board actions. Commit funds to the City of Barkley for joint evidence processing and storage. Who wants to start off first?
Morning, Mark. Nate Neff, Black Hawk County Sheriff. I want to thank you guys for taking the time to meet with us this morning. And obviously you had to be here at ten anyway, but coming a little bit early to get this taken care of so we didn't have to kind of keep picking the can down the road over a bit further. So, thank you very much for that, appreciate everyone's time. And then to kind of go into this, I know we met about a month ago and originally talked about going in with Waterloo on a joint evidence building, lab building. Something that's kind of been kicking around for pushing four years now that this has come up. Funding's kind of been there, hasn't been there, a lot of issues about it. When I brought it up a month ago, I know Linda especially wanted to get some more details, some more information on it. So I did meet with Linda here a couple of weeks ago, we talked about some things. I never did get like a big list of questions or anything to go over today. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to cover a lot of this, kind of roll up real quick on what we've talked about over the last few years, get some stuff on some high level. And then I'm actually going to have my investigators talk about it. I know over the years you've heard Tony Thompson, Mark Grubbs, Dan Me, I'll talk about it kind of as an administrative level, but I want you guys to hear from the people that are actually doing the work and the ones that this actually affects on a daily basis. Investigation's one area that I've never actually worked in, so for me to try and tell you what they do, it's not going to be as effective as listening to them talk. So we're going to get going on this here. Okay. So... The big part that we're going to talk about is, one thing on it is employee safety. As you know, as we talked about getting this new building a few years ago, one of the big things on it, as we got into with Baker Tilly and then our insurance companies followed up on it and stuff, that our current facility just isn't safe for the employees to work in. I know a question I always comes up now is that since we're taking things other places to be done, the question, well, how much are we spending to do that? And I wish I had a great answer for you because I know if I could tell you we're spending next dollar of yours, that's going to make it a lot easier for you to justify the expense of the new building. It's going to make it easier for me to tell you why we need it. Unfortunately, I don't have that dollar amount. And part of that, it's like we've almost kind of shot ourselves in the foot, but really it's more a result of the dedication, hard work that these guys are doing every day. A lot of the stuff that is that they would have normally processed in that building, and we were told we can't do that, so they've either been doing it on scene. Same hazards exist, it's just that basically we haven't been told by our insurance company they can't do it on scene. Been doing it at Raymount, at the other tow buildings. Again, a lot of those same health concerns exist, a lot of those same safety factors exist, but there's also the factor of how safe is it, how secure is the evidence? We have to leave things there overnight, it's only as safe as the tow truck driver who's taking it there, whatever. We lose a lot of that chain of custody reliability, we may have to do that.
Nate, I hate to interrupt, but you're using the current Raymount now, the one that we just purchased, are you using that now?
Whichever tow company takes it, I don't know, and I'll let them talk. I don't know if there's a specific company where they've been using that again. Again, that gets down to the day-to-day stuff that I'm honestly not going to be able to talk to you very well about. But at any of those tow companies' garages, and again, it's not a secure facility. They lock it up for us, but we have no control over who's in and out of those buildings, so that's always an issue. And then, a lot of our stuff does go to DCI to be processed, so we're out to drive down the man-hours, that kind of stuff. And then also, instead of getting our things processed right away like we would here, we're making our citizens wait, our crime victims wait for however long it takes to get down the line of whatever else they're processing. So again, the big part that started this, on some of this though, is the safety. So again, no heating, no water, no air conditioning, that kind of stuff. We do have a small lab at the Sheriff's Office, and I don't think that's been touched on much. It's small, it's outdated, we can't do, most of our stuff that we do, especially we recover in burglaries, we're doing cars, we're doing sometimes a little like truckloads of processing. Any of that stuff can't be done there. Some of the small drug, that kind of stuff can be done there. When it's done, you can tell when it's being done because there's marijuana odors, there's everything drifting through the building, which I honestly just kind of thought was a normal part of the process, but they have assured me that that shouldn't be that way, it's not that way. And they'll go home with headaches, other health concerns. It's just not a, not a safe situation there either, so that needs to be updated, need to be fixed anyway. A new building would take care of that. You know, they keep asking me for Cheetos when they do this, I don't know if that has something to do with it or not, but we've cut that out of the budget then too. So we've got two different facilities, and both are outdated, both are not what they should be. Comes to being able to service our community, again, we've talked about either they can't do stuff on scene, or they have to do it on scene, or it's not safe. If they're doing it there, there's another manpower issue. If it's a secure garage, one or two of our investigators can handle it. When they're doing it on scene, at least two of them are there. Also generally I got a patrol officer that stays put just for scene safety too. And if it's something that goes overnight, two days, three days, we're spending a lot of time and money staffing that area there. So again, it's less efficient, you got more risk contamination, you're just tying up staff on it. We've talked about how often we would use this lab. This is over the last five years, these are our crime statistics. Now, there is an evidence to process each and every single time, but a lot of these stuff, some of them there are every time, some roughly half the time, but even, so if you did every one of those cases, you'd be looking at roughly one case a day that you're going to be doing. Probably cut that number in half, but we're still looking at roughly 180, 200 cases that you're getting processed in some fashion or other. Some of those, especially you get into a fatality, the vehicle's always going to be processed, and that's usually a second day process. Obviously armed robberies, murders, sex assaults, that kind of stuff, there's evidence there that's going to take days. Some of the narcotics ones are a little more simple, quicker thing to go through. And that's one big thing is how often does this get used? It will get used a lot. Our current storage options, right now, we're not hurting too badly, we've definitely got some space, but going forward, we're going to need more room to grow. And the biggest problem that we have with the two issues that we have, our building on Utica, again, we've talked about for the lab processing, it's the same for the storage, it's not climate controlled. When you have evidence from a homicide, it has to stay forever. We've got some stuff there that's deteriorating faster than it could, we've got road and concerns. Evidence just isn't going to stay sound there. We do have the Sheriff's Office basement where it's a little more climate controlled, still dark, still damp, but again, you and I are talking downstairs now, we're going to take things downstairs, upstairs, down the elevator, up the elevator. Sometimes, as I said, we've talked about, we've literally had seventeen, eighteen truckloads of evidence recovered from burglary, trying to get some of that stuff. We have generators, you have power tools, getting that stuff down there. And in my time at Sheriff's Office, we've just about lost that basement with two different floods. I know Heather's had one time where she had to go down and anything on the floor, they were putting up on tables. That room is right next to one of the larger stunt pits down there, we had extra stunt pumps running in, when they had the door off, yeah, it dropped out. So, we've literally lost that twice. So to get that into a safer zone would be extremely beneficial for us. Talking about storage needs, obviously, I've mentioned burglaries several times, truckloads. There's new legislation now that requires us to keep evidence from sex assaults indefinitely, so that's going to start stacking up on us. There's definitely future girls needed there, and it's the same with murder evidence. That's always going to be that way, we have to keep that indefinitely. Fortunately in the county, we don't have too many of those, but if you have much evidence from any of them, it's going to start building up on us. The sex assault one is definitely going to be a key factor for us though, that unfortunately we do see a number of those, and the amount of evidence you take in on each of those can be pretty large, so. And again, that kind of stuff can be, linen's clause, mattress, that kind of stuff, things that are going to deteriorate if they're not properly cared for. Our initial proposal back in the twenty-one, twenty-two range was to use our land out at the facility, at the Raymond Range Training Facility. We had about eighty-four hundred square feet on it. We've talked about the 1.5 million dollar cost, but there's another quarter million dollars on top of that with different licensing, professional services, that kind of stuff. About a quarter million, that was going to be covered by that grant. So that's kind of how we ended up with the 1.5 million that we're asking for here. And again, I mentioned to you one of the supervisors who no longer here, that was the number he'd thrown out too, so when we're talking about that number, that's, that's why we ended up where we're at, as far as our ask goes.
What was the 250 for again? I don't remember that last time.
The 250 on top of the 1.5 million? That was, so...
It says, oh, I know what you're talking about. You're talking about the two, it was 200,000, but I was going to say the Black Hawk Gaming Grant.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It wasn't an additional cost.
Okay, that's my mistake, I thought it was 250.
But it was a portion of the 1.5, whatever. It wasn't like an additional cost of 250,000 we needed for something.
The number I've got from a statement of probable cause from some of the paperwork back then showed construction and site development was 1,540,200 dollars, and then fees, industry and administrative fees were 208,310 for 1,748,510.
Oh, no, I just meant it was an additional cost, it was just part of the cost.
Right.
Okay, thanks. I was thinking that there was an additional 250.
Okay, yeah, so we got that. And then that, that is my mistake then, I was thinking it was 200, I was thinking it was 250, so I stand corrected there. But that's where we're at before, so we're roughly asking for around the same amount of money. And I know Linda, you, one question you did ask me was like, well, if we're spending the same amount of money, you know, why are we going to do a joint building when we could just do the same one for ourselves on that?
You're hitting a lot of the points I ask. It was, I was, I was like, when the questions came up, I was like, it's the cost, I said it was one of the things as we talked about, it was how much it's used. And, and so, I appreciate your presentation, I knew when you said we were doing it, it was like, great, I was here.
Happy, happy to do it, so, again, we take that 1.5, really 1.75 million dollars from three to four years ago, we're going to guess that's over 2 million dollars today. We're talking at 8,000 square foot building, this one's around 14,000, we're, and I've got the floor plan coming up, that's, we're still tweaking it, we've had several meetings with them, kind of going back and forth, but we're getting it dialed in. Right now, it's about 14,000 square foot, roughly, and we'll show you a little bit over half of that would be used either just by us or agencies. One thing with this being there, the city's agreed to maintain the building and all the monthly expense stuff, so we won't have any ongoing costs associated with this. The building we were looking at was actually just going to be a steel pool building, we're looking at poured walls on this, so it's going to be a lot more secure building, it will withstand the elements as well as if anybody would try to get in there. Waterloo PD's regular are going to have staff there, so again, you're talking a little bit more security on first, and I believe second, you guys have somebody out there too, so. So for most of the day, there's going to be somebody out there, able to share their equipment, knowledge, experience, expertise. If there would be an alarm out there, if there was something at the range, depending on where the deputies are, talking, could be a few minute response time, could be a 20 minute response time, with this being just out on MLK, if there's an alarm there, we're going to have somebody there right away. So it benefits both agencies, and in turn, it's going to benefit our entire community. Here's the preliminary floor plan, I think this is like the fourth version we've gone back and forth with, so it's, we're still working on it. Basically, most anything on what you see is the left half there, it's either our room or the shared room. The biggest portion of the building is obviously Waterloo's evidence storage, which is most of the green there. Our green is a little bit smaller down in the, in the corner there, and I think there might have been one where it actually doesn't take away the, one of the drying rooms and exhaust, so, so this is even the most recent one, I actually grabbed the wrong one, I apologize, so. So yeah, our, our storage on that is actually, you see that room above it?
It's double that.
So it's double that. Yeah, that was one thing we were concerned about.
You see the one on the left?
What's that?
Which, which room?
So, if you look at the bottom green there, it says county storage, I don't know if you can read it from there, it's underneath the purple on the red.
Okay.
That green is our storage, but it's actually doubled, since it's on, on the latest version, to make sure that we've got enough storage on there.
So we're taking some of the other space or it's addition to that building? Or does this get some more?
Yeah, it's taken away one of those drying rooms and some of that electronics lab, which so, electronics lab is Waterloo thing, but that's something that they do for us as well, so we will, so while we don't have a person in that, we're still being able to utilize that space. The general lab they see up top there, that's for both agencies to share there, and then the vehicle processing lab on the left side where those cars are, that's, that's a big part for both of us too, so. Roughly half the building there is either ours solely or ours as a combined thing. And you're thinking, like I said, I don't know if anyone else sees any other changes that have been made on there, but I think, I think double our storage space is the big part on it, so. With that, I'm going to have our investigators come up. Got Sergeant Heather Dolan, the PD detectives here, BJ Heath, and Bill Weiser. And I should include in here, Lance Passinger, Sir Captain over Investigations, and he's been involved in this for the last three, four years. Again, you've heard administrators standing up here talking numerous times, so instead of having Lance come up and talk, I want, I want the people that are going to actually be involved with this stepping up here, so I'm going to turn it over.
You can talk to Lance, Bill Weiser.
Okay, I'll probably interject a little bit if I need to.
Hello, I'm, like you said, I'm Heather Dolan, I'm Sergeant for Investigations, but I've actually been with the investigation team for ten of the last 12 years, so. So, I was told that there's some questions and concerns about the future evidence and processing center, so today, I want to talk just a little bit about the effects that it has on my team, and the potential effects it would have if we don't pair with Waterloo's department. So I know one of the big questions that Nate talked to us about was, well, how many times are we going to use it? But unfortunately, as you guys know, like, law enforcement is not a predictable type of occupation, so it really just depends on the crimes that we get during the year, so, but during any of those crimes, there's a good potential that we would need to process some type of evidence. So I looked at the Sheriff's statistical review for the last six years, for just burglaries, I picked one that I know that we would definitely be using it to process and inventory the evidence, and so in the last six years, we had sixty-seven, seventy-four, fifty-one, twenty-four, fifteen, and thirty-four. So as you can see, the numbers vary quite a bit per year, but what I can tell you is that each one of those burglaries had the potential of needing the evidence base, and that if we don't have it, and we have to, like he said, he had mentioned that we have to have the patrol guys stay on scene so we can do stuff that we could typically take and do it back at the evidence lab or the storage facility. So, you know, that's taken away, we only have three to four patrolmen out there on any shift, so you're taking away from what they should be doing to help us with somewhere I believe we should have a space to do our job in. So, since our impound has been deemed unsafe by our insurance company, I feel like we've been pretty lucky, because for the last two years that that's happened, or three years, however long that's been, we haven't had the big crimes that we historically have, and like I said, I've been there many years, we have them, you know, like it's, like I said, unpredictable. So, some of those crimes, I'd like to point out, that we don't have the space to utilize is like sex assaults that would happen in a vehicle. Historically, we would take those vehicles back and be able to process them with like luminosity, and take our time and look for that evidence. I'm not sure what we would do, but we would, we would figure it out because it is for our community, but it would take us longer to do that and to get that vehicle back to where it needs to be. So other crimes that we would seize vehicles for and need a controlled environment would be, I'd like to just point out the fact that it's our more invasive and violent crimes like sex, our sex abuse, murder, stabbings, stolen vehicles, things of that nature, things that we really want to spend our time on and make sure that we're serving our community and solving those crimes in the best possible way. Like I said, right now, we just don't have that space, and I feel like we've been fortunate enough to not use it, but I know we'll need it in the future. That's just something you can count on in law enforcement. Another thing I'd like to point out, I know I mentioned burglaries a lot, but historically we've had, we have huge burglaries where we end up seizing a large amount of stuff, you know, like we'll find out who that person is, the suspect who's burglarized, and we'll find an enormous amount of stuff. And then we need somewhere to take all that stuff back, set it out, inventory it, and put it into evidence. And when you think of, like, the county burglaries, we'll have UTVs, trucks, you know, tractors. There was one where we did a week-long search warrant on an individual who was stealing from auctions all over, like Wisconsin, Illinois, Minnesota, all over, and Iowa of course. And so that one took us a week to get the inventory, or get the stuff out of his home and out of his sheds, and then we had to take it back to the impound and process everything. And so we had to, we had a team of like three or four people, and it took us weeks and weeks to do that one. And then we had to, we did it as quickly as we could, but we had to do it correctly. And then we gave that property, or the other agencies, time to come back and go through that property so they could get that back to their victims. Without that space, I'm not sure how we would have processed that or where we would have handled that. So, I would just like you guys, you know, just to think, we're just here, we want to serve our community in the best capability that we can, and we need that space. And pairing with Waterloo, we've always had a very good relationship historically with their lab team, so I would like, I hope that you guys consider that. And so with that, I have Bill Weiser coming up to talk a little bit about this stuff.
Hi, Bill Weiser. So I'm going to touch a little bit more on vehicle processing. That's a, according to the plan, the vehicle processing garage is a good portion of that. It's important to us because we process vehicles to collect and preserve evidence, and we've had some good results in the past processing vehicles. Just in the year leading up to the building being not usable, we believe it was at least four cases we were identi, we were able to identify suspects just by processing vehicles. Yeah, so it's, the best practice is to use a suitable building. I know in the meantime, we have, like Heather said, we've been processing on scene, or sometimes if we are assisting another agency, we've been lucky enough to use one of their buildings. But if we, if we had our own case, you know, some of the serious crimes that Heather was talking about, either the suitable place would be the DCI lab in Ankeny, and while they have a good facility down there and the best equipment, it wouldn't be efficient to drive down there. We would have to take a minimum of two of us, we'd have to tow the vehicle, or multiple vehicles if that's the case. So we could spend a day to weeks down in Ankeny, driving back and forth every day. So, not an efficient use of our time or resources. The other aspect of vehicle processing that Nate touched on was the serious or fatal motor vehicle accidents. Our current practice is to tow those to Raymount. Their facility is out off Plaza, kind of Plaza and Dubuque out there, they just built a new place. We tow the vehicles there, they get stored either inside or outside, and then the vehicles will sit there until we can do search warrants, get everything together, get out there and process the vehicles. So that could take several days, and like Nate said, there are a few drawbacks to that, the security, we, to my knowledge, we haven't had any issues with that, but it is only secure as the people running the, the building out there. So, the other drawback would be the cost. It's, when I checked, it was a hundred dollars a day to store a vehicle inside, and then fifty dollars a day to store it outside. So as the vehicles are sitting there, they're racking up storage fees, sometimes more than the vehicle's even worth, and these costs get passed on to the victims or their families. So, it would be best to have a facility, our own facility, where we can do that in. It's far more secure, and the victims and their families would have less costs transferred to them. It would also make things more efficient, you know, if we could tow a vehicle out to this new facility, we could process it, all of our supplies are already there. If we do collect evidence from the vehicle, we're right there at the storage area, we can just walk it through a couple of doors and within the storage. So, I guess everything I've talked about so far, one of the main things is efficiency, and that's important to us because we all are investigators, we're the C, the crime scene, evidence processing team, and we're the property technicians. You know, other places, those duties are all split up between different people, so anytime we can be more efficient in any way, more efficient with processing, that will allow us more time to investigate cases or get our property all squared away. So, again, efficiency, that would be huge, a huge improvement with this facility. That's all I have, thank you.
BJD, Black Hawk County. This process was initially proposed in January 2022. When Baker Tilly assessed our current facility, they identified concerns that were characterized as unacceptable health risks. They also outlined our current facility's limitations and how vital a new facility would be for our department. The design of this new building and its functionality will have a positive impact on our department and the work that I and other investigators do to ensure that we have the necessary tools to do our job, a safe environment to work in, and the ability to process evidence to the fullest extent for the citizens of Black Hawk County and those departments we assess both within and outside the county. As assessed by ICAP in January 2023, they noted that our current impound processing building located on the corner of Utica and Mulberry Street in Waterloo was an uninsulated whole building that does not have heat, air conditioning, running water, and has minimal lighting. They noted that this building lacks proper safety and security features that are typically associated with law enforcement, evidence processing, and storage room facilities. The construction of this new joint evidence processing building will address the safety and security features they mentioned in this report. The building will have a perimeter fence encasing the facility, hardened exterior and interior building construction, high-security doors and locks, external and internal video surveillance, redundant area entry requirements, environmental smoke, fire, and carbon monoxide alarms, biological handling areas, ventilation, and communication abilities. These needed updates will ensure that we can prevent animals and weather conditions from interfering with the condition of evidence after it has been seized, processed, and stored at the facility, and reduce the risk of liability for improper handling, degradation, or loss of that evidence's evidentiary value in our criminal proceeding. The hope is that we will never have to use all the equipment our department will gain from this new facility, but the unfortunate reality is that we will. We cannot predict what crimes will be committed, or when they will occur. This building will ensure that we are prepared to deal with any incident that arises with a joint facility with the Waterloo Police Department. We will have the assisted expertise of those lab officers in the immediate area to learn from and help guide us in cases we don't often deal with or have never had to work. We've had a great working relationship with the lab officers at Waterloo Police Department and look forward to the opportunity to work alongside them.
Want to jump up real quick? So, just, and I can answer any questions, I've been working for the Sheriff's Office 38 years, 25 of it's been investigations, so I see a lot of changes over the years, and we've got by with stuff that we shouldn't have, we could have been more efficient, got handled cases a lot better, got more evidence, more processed stuff to get stuff to the lab, to be able to make more arrests than what we have, and quicker than we did in the past, than we have in the past. I'm excited about the lab being combined. I was excited before when we were talked about getting a new processing room, a new evidence room, a new storage facility, and especially the vehicle processing facility. This is something we should have had a long time ago, including Waterloo too. By us going together, it adds stuff to the Waterloo Police Department, and more to us than the Waterloo Police Department will be able to use. The, the, their officers have experience and see more cases and handle more homicides and more different cases than we have, and we'll be right there where we can talk to them. We do that now, but it's a lot easier when you're there together, and you can talk to somebody instead of trying to call them on the phone or, or communicate with them. When we were talking about the towing and the process, the victims are always the one that has to pay for these tow bills and these processing fees, and we had one, just a, a vehicle fatality, by the time we could get to the black box, it was towed by Raymount, and the cost to the victim, went back to the victim, was over 5,000 dollars that Raymount wanted for just their storage and towing fees to get the vehicle off the road and then hang on to it. And that, to me, that just, that hurts, it really does. And then, when I was talking about being able to get stuff done, we've had a number of cases, and I can tell you, where you look back and having this facility will definitely help us out. We had one where we had a, a number of burglaries, and they happened to different groups, we get hit pretty hard in the county, I think it was three years ago. And, and one of them, if we could have got them in jail a little bit quicker, not saying we could have or not, but Waterloo ended up having a bank robbery with that. but Waterloo ended up having a bank robbery with that same group, um, where there was a shooting and one of the suspects got killed. Um, the uh, just, there's a lot of other things here that just um, you know, it's gonna, like I said, um, we deal with a lot of weather. And for us lately, you know, Iowa weather, you can't predict it. Um, and it's tough for us to try to get stuff processed. There's times we lose stuff because of the weather, not getting it where it needs to go and being able to process as quick as we can. Um, I could go over and over, you know, all kinds of stuff over the years that this will benefit, I'm just telling you. Um, this is, this is, is huge. Um, and we do, we do, um, in the past, there's might have been, this might not have worked now with the supervision and administration. This, this is a good thing, this will happen, this will work. Or if it does happen, it will, it'll be an asset to the whole county, not just the Blackhawk County outside the county, but the, the city of Waterloo also. Any questions, anything that I can clear up or any?
What's the total cost of the project?
We're right around, around three million?
Three, three, three point five.
That's for just the building, this building?
Yes, and, and um, some of the, that's the building and the equipment inside, the new equipment inside the building. There's a couple of things that, and we could go on for days, but there's a, there's a vehicle list, there's things like that that we could use, Waterloo could use, Tri-County could use. Other agencies could use stuff that we have in that building, agencies within, within um Blackhawk County. And we do how a lot of the other small agencies outside, they call us because they don't have the experience that we have. So a matter of fact, I'm subpoenaed for court for a case that's coming up on a sex abuse case and it was down in La Porte City. But we do that and that's, a lot of our cases are helping the other cities, not just out in the county.
I guess that's one question I would have as far as like the cost sharing of it. And when we talked about, I know it was talked about a couple, few years ago, I said that was one of the, we knew there were a lot of letters of support of it. And we talked about the, the need by other communities, other, and maybe even other counties that would look at um this being a benefit to having in the region.
Yes.
And I don't know if that's been approached at all or
As far as what?
As far as participating in the cost or
No, because it's so little that we need it no matter what, whether they're gonna do it or not, we need a, we need a facility. Um, so that's, that's not even, all that does is muddy the water. We need it ourselves and to wait for other people willing to pitch in, it's not gonna happen.
Well, as other people would need it, would we be helping them, I guess, and how would that, how would
If, if we can't, if we have the time and the manpower, we do, yes.
Cause I know other counties, other places help us.
We, we help other agencies, Waterloo's, I mean, no one's gonna be turned away unless, I mean, Cedar Falls, I would love to see chip in on this because we know especially the vehicle processing part they're probably going to use, um.
Did they say why not? Because I'm curious, I haven't reached out to them and I'm just curious why they aren't just being
They got their own lens, that's, I mean, the, the amount that they would use would be minimal and I guess they feel that they don't, you know, whether they have the means or the desire to chip in on it. I can't really speak for their reasoning, I guess, however.
No, no, I didn't expect you to, I just wondered if you'd approach them and they
And when you're, I mean, you asked about the total project, right now, like I said, we've gone through several floor plans on it, um, we're kinda getting dialed in. But they can't really finalize anything because if you guys come back today and tell me, no, we're not going in, that's, whether they're gonna change the scope of what this project is, um, but.
I guess that's why I think it would have been nice to have it on the front end of it, so that you could have done more planning or better planning and we know the dollar
We've had several meetings together, we know roughly what range we're in.
Well, and you and I've had that discussion, but it is a concern that we didn't have some, this board hasn't had those discussions recently or hasn't been brought to us, it's not been in our five-year plans for funding for this as well.
And a big part of that on this, cause it kind of came up, again, it was something we've talked about several times over the years and I haven't had it on there. It was on my agenda to get back in the five-year plan and start working on it. Um, when Waterloo ended up selling their city hall, moving out and stuff, it really expedited things for them. Um, and so the afternoon for us to came in, um, someone texted me one night and said, I just gotta approve for this building, can we push forward as years? And I went Monday night and then next Tuesday morning, I was here saying, I'm gonna be on the agenda for next week to do this. So I mean, I realize it came together fast and to convince you with uh one and a half million dollar request out of left field. Um, it's, it's a little unheard of, um, but on the other hand,
It's not a deep product, I'm not very critical of you Nate, I'm just saying that looking at the funding and because it competes with other projects, other building projects we've even got, because it also competes with projects that we look at, just like we do all of our departments, when we look
Absolutely, I, I get that, I'm a taxpayer, I appreciate you looking at it, we're gonna, uh.
But it's coming up with the funding then to do that or whatever we wanna come up with, it doesn't mean it would have to be one and a half. I guess, when I looked at the building being three, three million and us not being, doing fifty percent of our pro- it's not like we're a larger portion of the project's being done. I know Waterloo is obviously for the size and, and that type of thing, um, I wondered how we came up with the one point five million.
Again, I kinda based it off of
I guess that's a Waterloo question, not you, but I just meant the one point five being asked from the county.
Well, I said, I kinda based it off where we're at with our building, what was already discussed in that. Um, I kinda based it off, it's roughly half the project, um, which you know, even my initial proposal, I said percent of the project not to exceed one and a half million, so if they go build a Taj Mahal out there, we're, we're not going in on, you know, fifty percent of that. And a part of that is, again, it goes back to supervisor who's no longer here, but that was a number that he threw out too. So that number's not set in stone, but to me, it seemed like a pretty fair place to start.
He was also the supervisor that voted against it.
What's that?
He was also the supervisor that voted against it.
He was, then he came back around, yeah, so, but it's, that's obviously, that's obviously old politics that don't involve him or me or
Well, he gave several reasons why not for the, for someone, so I just meant though that there were some things ever given at that point in time. And about others, not using the facility, but it's how much the county uses it and city, up Waterloo and working together. I agree with that, I appreciate the fact, because we did mention it at the time, when we were doing that, about partnerships or working together or reaching out and seeing if we could do things jointly.
Yeah, and that was definitely a discussion, I think the, obviously the hope when you're partnering with someone is that it brings your costs down. Um, over time, over the last three years, obviously that's kind of affected that. Um, but a big part of it, like I mentioned, is we're all gonna build in a pole building, this is gonna be a much more secure building. The lab's gonna be bigger than what we would have had. Um, square footage wise, we're probably getting about the same amount of square footage that we would have had in our building. Um, it's just, the, the lab is the main part of that building. It's such a huge building because the amount of storage they need is astronomical compared to ours. Um, but that's obviously, well, that's the cheapest part of the building anyway. The lab is where the expense is and the vehicle processing is where the expense is, um, as well as just getting the site prep and that kind of stuff. So, you know, if you said, no, we're not gonna do this, we want you to build your own, I'm probably gonna stand here and ask you for the same, if not more money anyway. And this is something that's really gonna help out both agencies. Um, and really, my kind of hope is that it actually sets us up. I think there's several things that the city and the county can work together on, um, to do better. I don't think we've been the greatest partners with each other, um, depending on who you ask whose fault that is, but uh
I was gonna say, whose fault this is.
But I don't know if you're gonna use this, it's kind of a launching pad to do a little bit more with the, with the city. There's, I think there's a lot of opportunities for resources to be shared, uh, still law enforcement, but for the greater good too, so.
You know, as I look at the decision, part of, part of the struggle um is, is straight up probably pay for it, right? Um, in terms of bonding, because the project is the size that it is, what flexibility do we have to bond for our contribution, is there any flexibility there?
Okay, I, first of all, I didn't really prepare for this session today, so I'm gonna start saying that. Um, to, to issue bonds, the total project cost for the, for the county, this is not applied to cities, this is in county state law. That the total cost of the project can't exceed one million five hundred and sixty thousand. Doesn't matter if we put in fifty thousand or the full one point five six million. There may be a possibility if we had a tipped district, but obviously we, we don't. I shouldn't even call it a tipped district, an urban renewal area, but obviously we don't today. So today, for us to do this, if you're gonna use bonding, it would require a public vote, which we have to jump through all those hoops. Um, or you would have to use general, general bond.
Is it possible for the city to carry the bond and us to make payments to them?
I don't, not, well, let me rephrase that, we could not use our debt service letting you do that, we would be stuck using three fifty.
Right.
Or we're already basically
So I got a couple of questions and, and more questions on the funding. Nate, I know that, I, I believe in the coordination with the city and saving costs there. Uh, that is a no-brainer and putting both entities together, trying to accomplish the same thing with this facility. Uh, I do wanna see the draft of twenty eighty agreement, I want to see that before I
Yep, um, we do, we have received the initial twenty eighty on it, uh, Mike and I have both looked at and we've got some things like definitely tweaked on it.
There's some concerns there that we, uh, we think those
Your close.
So that, that would be my other thing is, we do put a vote on it and say it would be pending the agreement of a twenty eighty that's suitable for both parties. And then obviously that'd be when we come back to your guys for your final vote before
Will you be looking to keep in the current building?
Yes, oh yeah, we definitely would still keep our current building.
Okay, alright. The uh, knowing someone that had their home broke into and all their belongings, they found it in the county. I know someone that suffered from and needed the county in that investigation and all the stuff you guys had piled up for them to have to look through and identify. So knowing someone personally that's went through some of this, yeah, I feel that the need is there. The funding is the problem. Uh, the funding, I don't know what the problem was or how, where you're thinking the dollars in the past when this was coming up. I'm fully in favor of doing something with the city, but the funding is the, gonna be the real hard part since we've already been putting together a five-year plan through this budget process since I've been here and thought we had a good plan set up, so it's gonna create a little bit of a hiccup in it.
And part of that is, to be fair to everyone too, I was gonna say, when the art of dollars became available and that we thought this, this project fit within those, the sheriff did it, Mark, everybody did, and I thought it did, thought it did. And so those were dollars that weren't tax dollars, but dollars that we could use for some of the things that, such as this and the importance of it. When we found out we couldn't, that's what changed the course of it. It still was a dollar issue then, it was how were we gonna fund it? And that's why I put it in a list of to-do projects that we still wanted to consider in the future, but how we were gonna fund them. And then it did compete against other projects, Plan Press was one, and the Health Department, and the clinic, and things like that. And as we said, we ended up, we ended up having to use some of reserves to fund all of those projects too, because they didn't come out of the nice neat number. But unfortunately, this one didn't meet the qualifications for our money then, so then it was just our reserves that we could use, so.
So I, I, I get funding's difficult, I mean, I've seen the board hand out some, some good checks in the last year or two for other projects. And on the, on the selfish side, that's a little frustrating to see, but on the other side, I mean, it's somewhat inspirational to see too because see that if you guys firmly truly believe in a project, you're willing to support it, where there's a will, there's a way. I definitely can admire it, looking at it from that aspect, so that's where I'm just hopeful that, uh, you'll deem this as worthy and I said there's, where there's a will, there's a way.
Is there room with the city and, Rob, you know this answer, instead of all the money upfront, is there a way of making a three-year payment into it? Yeah, I'm sure
Say their, their initial twenty eighty
Wouldn't be that advantageous to us though, cause we're, not like we'd be able to bond for it, so if we're gonna come out of reserves, we just come out of reserves.
Come out of reserves, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think the direction it's heading is that we're gonna just have to go to a public referendum, um, when I think the public would support it. Um, I'm not sure how, how quickly that process can be done, whether it could be on for this coming fall or, or not, but.
Uh, I mean, yes, that is definitely doable, it would be, I don't know, if you're looking at just putting on the ballot, we would just need to have that by the end of August, beginning of September, I don't know what needs to happen from now to then on the back end. To get an agreement on, to put that language on the ballot, but it's definitely, still has time to be on this November ballot. And then anything being bonded like this now has to be on a November ballot, so um, you used to have a little bit more option, but now it's just November, so either this November or next November. Which, my, just another note on that, if we do end up doing the engineers project, that looks to be next November. So you may not want both of those to be on the ballot at the same time.
And I'm assuming you guys would prefer an answer, well, you'd probably prefer an answer before November.
I'd say maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
It sounds pushy, but they're, obviously we got the architecture, I mean, we've got, say, floor plans somewhat drawn up, but they can't go forward until they know if, if we're gonna use half that building or not.
I mean, I'll tell you Nate, uh, I'm supportive of the project, I've, I've, I've been supportive from the jump. On those other community projects, there was seventeen million dollars of economic impact and sixteen million of economic impact individually, right? They, they were able to make that case on hard numbers. I'm not saying no, I am saying that I've gotta be able to make that case.
I understand.
And, and I, I get that, I mean, that, I appreciate that there, there are some case numbers here. Um, some conversation of what that timeline looks like for processing, what the, what the impact on individuals is. Five thousand dollars for people to get a car out of this thing is crazy. Um, I'll need some help on making that case on, on, on the dollar side. I don't know that I'm, one point five is a lot, right? I mean, I, I'll tell you, I was supportive of a project for a million dollars that generated seventeen million dollars annually and sixteen million dollars annually. Those, those things make sense to me, I think you acknowledged at the beginning, that without having, you can't come in and say it's gonna be X amount of cases that we're spending this much this year and this much the year before. So it, it, it does, they're not quite apples to apples, so, um. I, I'd be interested to hear from other board members on, in the, in recognition that they can't wait eight months for a public vote to know whether we're gonna come in or not. I think at least some temperature gauge from the board of what dollar amount are we supportive of? Uh, that even if we still ended up saying we're gonna, we're gonna send it to a referendum, if we, if we can get as much as we can, great, or whatever that dollar amount is. And then you guys know, well, if that doesn't pass the public measure, there is interest in the board of using fund balance or reserves for that dollar. To me, that tends to make sense for us to just say, so they can move forward on plans, if it's a half a million, cool, if it's seven fifty.
I'd, I'd like to do that, I'd like to be able to do that, but I, I don't feel comfortable in, in a dollar amount. We haven't seen the twenty eighty, number one, this, the whole thing could go south on it, I'm not saying it would, ever. I'm just saying, we could give them the money and have new administrations in and ten years down the road, they say, sorry, this is ours, we're gonna do it, whatever. I'm just making
But I'm assuming you guys start moving forward on plans
The twenty eighty is, is basically locking us in to that building. And that's one thing right now, I think it came in, their initial was fifteen year plus five years, and Mike and I are both in a agreement that fifteen years is not nearly long enough.
I'm just saying there's factors that we haven't seen yet and to commit a dollar amount when we don't have it necessarily in reserves. We've spent down reserves from what we had seventy-five percent reserves before we did some of our projects to, I think we're less than fifty or something right now, obviously there could be revenue, so we could be at something higher. But that's a considerable amount that we've changed already, so to have that comfort level that we had at seventy saying, yes, we've got reserves and we can do some of these projects, that was a benefit for us. It's shrinking somewhat, but it's not supportive of the project. And you did a better job of explaining the project and thank you so much for the information provided today than we've ever had of all the facts and information, and not that there wasn't some kind of it provided. But to give a promise or commitment, I guess is what, Nate, that's what you're looking for, is to do that?
I, I think, I think what they're looking for is that, they can't, I mean, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that if we give you one point five or zero, that would probably impact the scale of the project.
But how would you, you would hate to cut back the project.
I understand, but, but they're coming with a real question, so I think we can give a real answer.
Uh, Rob Duncan, Chief Police Foreman, uh, thanks for, you know, meeting with us this morning, it's real important. We try to come up with, okay, this is either gonna go We try to come up with, okay, this is either gonna go as a partnership. Like I said before, Nate and I have worked together for a long time. This twenty eighty will lock it in, so there won't be any issue with new administration coming in and us saying, Sheriff's Department, you can't. Come up, you know, play with us anymore or anything, but.
Oh, twenty eighties have been changed before and been asked to change and we are the perfect example of that, so they, they can be in our.
Well, we've, so the city's already committed to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the architect. And we are going to build this building, uh, and I think we plan on probably starting in the fall. Uh, the way, um, everything's working out, we've met with the architect three times now, we've moved the sheriff's department in without a commitment. To get their take and exactly what they need, uh, the land is seven acres, that's about half a million dollars. It's industrial land, so, uh, we've already committed quite a bit to this, but. We're just looking for a, a commitment and basically that's it.
You guys have already secured the land?
The land is city owned. We're, we're looking for a commitment saying, hey, uh, we're in, uh, we're gonna give you this much money. The one point five was thrown out initially because that's what was.
That was what we proposed for our own.
Three, four years ago, so.
I think, and I could be wrong on this, this made it, this is just an estimate and trying to make rip close some of the conversation we had. And that was when we were looking at that and seeing how much business, how much, I guess, business service need we had for it. And we did talk about Waterloo being the larger user for evidence, obviously, and, and the need. And, um, we were just a small percentage, I believe the sheriff said, of what Waterloo would do, means, whatever.
For the evidence storage and for the processing, again, we use the same equipment, we use the same kinda stuff, there's in that lab, screwing. And again, that's the most expensive part of what we're doing and really the most important part of what we're doing. The storage is a nice, nice bonus.
Is, is twelve thousand square feet or fourteen, I think you said, one form of.
The, the current re- rendering is about fourteen thousand square feet. We'll shrink it down if, if we don't partner with you guys, so.
And seven acres, that's not the size needed for this building, that's additional.
That's, uh, that's the site we've kinda come up with, uh, we hope to have maybe some future buildings put on that as.
So if you didn't have our partnership, what would you size it to? If you just had to go it alone?
He's, uh, it's Captain Peker back there, he's, he's kinda been the, him and Captain McCrone have been the go-to as far as. All the architectural stuff that we've been working on, both at the New City Island and with this building here, so.
So you're, you'd be that eight to ten range?
Part of the trick here is that, that one point five, when it was just us, was a bondable project. This is now not a bondable project, right? But we can't use, we can't use it on a portion because the total, that's, I'm understanding it, total of the project exceeds that one.
Commitment's the hard part right now.
Yeah, and I understand commitments, we, we wanted to make sure that we got the twenty eighty and, and, and those pieces. I, I think, I, I would love to be able to tell you a number where I'm for sure comfortable. Or probably comfortable and where it's gonna be a little harder to get to. I mean, at least give you something so you know. Right, if we, if we say we'd like to be at a half a million on this project. Uh, or a quarter, three quarters of a million or, right, whatever we're gonna say, so that they can start to scale this project. I, I can't imagine you guys would be able to wait.
If you don't get one and a half million, and we partner with you still, but you don't, we don't give you one and a half million, what does that do to your project?
We're still gonna go forward.
Yeah, we're still.
Sure, it's just a matter of the size of the building. And we've got evidence requirements now because the legislature, right?
Right, but we, but also you guys, you gotta realize, you guys need a building.
Yeah.
You have to have a building. The one point five that she talks about for the bonding that you're going to bond for, if this project is gonna be more than that one point five.
Oh, yeah.
And in bonding areas, you're also talking about bonding for other projects, there are those projects now, you're gonna need money when you guys have this bonding issue in November. Cause people are gonna see that, which one do we go for, which one do we go down, which, you know, you have the need. So I don't, I don't know, these aren't wants, it's the needs, so, cause sometimes others don't see that.
And as you brought another point, we're trying to bond for building that isn't ours.
Right, that's why we want this partnership, this twenty eighty agreement, but also due to the cost, there's gonna be a larger cost with the upkeep of the building and we're gonna have to. That you won't have to now. So, there's, there's gonna, that's gonna be a huge number also, you gotta realize.
Michelle, can you tell us, and I'm trying to remember, I thought I had a number here handy, what our fund balance was as of last year? On June thirtieth, I remember reading it in the, the audit report you, that I've been studying and asking all these questions on. Would you have that number handy or know what that percentage is or?
On this sign, it's about a little over twenty-eight million, but you've already, we've committed potentially over four million. By the end of twenty-five, I think it will be down likely to twenty-four, could be a little more than that, maybe twenty-five. I don't think it'll be twenty-eight or twenty-nine because we've made several commitments already.
I guess I find a way to do this, but I just don't think, that's just me, it's, okay, today's not the day I can commit. I'm sorry, too many unknowns and the timeline even to step out is to say, yeah, let's do, not that you wouldn't wanna do it, saying you'll do it.
Personally, I wanna see it happen, I just don't know how to make it happen right now, it's a funding. And as soon as we can get some ideas on that. Yeah, like when, I, I wanna see the twenty eighty agreement just so we're, we know what we're putting our necks on here, make sure what words, everything's out.
Right, so I, just two questions and then you guys might answer the twenty eighty agreement, you want like a final cost of what you believe is built in. Being total or what your other questions are?
No, just.
We really need to have them if we wanna give you to pursue later, cause we have to move on with this project.
Well, I would question, this is me personally, only as one supervisor, the one and a half million and the justification for that. So that's what I meant, if we did it at a lesser amount, if we did it at a five hundred thousand or we did it at something higher. You know, just changing that, if that changes your project completely, like if you're counting on the one and a half for us to do your three million dollar project. Obviously, us giving you five hundred thousand changes the project. If you're gonna do the project anyway, but you just look like our participation, our partnership with you, that's a different kinda question to me.
And I, I would assume, right, that if you were to do it on your own, as you said, that would be a eight thousand to ten thousand square foot. Versus, versus the capacity for us to, to be engaged, what is that, right? Are we buying square footage at that point, right, like where, how does this, how does this sort of, I can tell you, I'm.
If it, if it changes it that much, then we end up both of us with one and a half million dollars of a, of a building, it's not what you're wanting to do because we're talking about a partnership.
I would guess some of what we put in changes what the twenty eighty says too, as far as the length of it goes, probably the, what's we put in, what's like, but they are to. Extend that twenty eighty out, that many more years, so, there kinda needs to be a number for us to go to them with and. It's a million, whether it's.
Well, I know there's a timeline to try to get this done, obviously, but the timeline not working for us at identifying dollar amount. So it's how do we work through that?
That was my question is if we're even to use fund balance, if we can do five hundred thousand this year, five hundred thousand next year, five hundred thousand third year. I don't know, and, and what you're saying, Davis, but it just, I'm trying to think how we can work other things in the budget over the next three years. And still make sure we're getting to that dollar amount that they need.
What was your question, Michelle? Well, I'm not concerned about the dollar amount they need to make their project work as much as how it works for the county and the taxpayers.
So what I, what I need to say is, if you make a commitment, it really is irrelevant to the number of years it's over. Because I have to commit it when you commit it. So I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it helps us, I guess, to say half a million a year over three years. Half a million a year now is what we would take out, I mean, or a total, total, whatever, totally, is what will come out.
Yeah, so it's great now we're committed, right?
If I were to make a, a commitment today, it would, if we had to come out of fund balance, I'm comfortable at about seven hundred, so. If I, if we were able to wait out the process and let us bond for it and go through the public referendum, then that would be higher. But, but if we have to come out of fund balance, and that's just because the state has put new restrictions on us every year, the last number of years. That we're running up into having to use fund balance to pay for, um, regular operating equipment all across all departments. And so that's why we try to be more protective of, of that fund balance.
Chris, you bring up a good point, uh, Rob, you guys talked to other cities about donating into this too or making contributions as well?
Uh, we talked to city halls, they're, have no interest. Obviously, they would wanna use the lab for vehicle processing once in a great while, but they've got a great fancy new shiny building. They got what they need, so.
Is there other examples where county and cities went together with a evidence facility like this?
So, I don't, I don't know.
A lot of places have a joint law enforcement center, but as far as just doing a lab processing like this, I'm not.
Kinda you mean?
Not aware of any, doesn't mean that out there.
To, to Chris's point, I, I was probably comfortable at half a million and was gonna take it, probably get to three quarters. That's not, that's not a motion, that's not anything, that's, I think, context for you guys, quite frankly. As you look to develop a plan that you can continue to bring to us, work through a twenty eighty, all of those pieces. Um, and to Chris's point, if we have the ability to go to a public vote, engage the public's interest. Uh, on supporting the measure, uh, that might be a different number, but for, for sure. I could, with some tums, get to that seven fifty. But also wanted to, allow folks time to process. Get, get, business work on that twenty eighty, hopefully at least gives you all some idea of where we're at it. Or some of us.
In that twenty eighty, it does list it out. An idea of what to put in that, right now it's, it says one point five, so, also in that, it's we appear all costs afterwards. Obviously, if that dollar goes less, then we probably look at, like, help with operating expenses as well.
Mike, we haven't heard from you as far as the board on that agreement, so I'm assuming you'll keep us abreast or give us some.
I, I, since we're actually talking about some of the specifics, I'm just gonna state openly what the, a couple of things about this twenty eighty. Number one, it's an initial draft from the city, so no change is debated, proposed, discussed, anything yet, so I don't want.
No.
Anybody to overreact to that aspect of it. Number two, the biggest concern I had, as has been discussed already in this meeting, is the fact that it has been the. Building has a considerably longer useful life and I hope that it does. If we're paying for half, roughly half of it, it struck me as overly limited that. City could decide, even I know we do after fifteen years, because there's no, there's no requirement. Number three, how we're gonna go about the payment process has to be massage a bit. Right now, it says, or at least in my opinion, and how Michelle and I have approached other agreements when we have funded certain projects. Typically, for example, we require that we actually see the places for the construction, uh, before we pay certain. Right now, uh, it, it's worded in such a way that we, you know, as soon as they, as soon as they bid the project or as soon as they orbit. Then we're gonna have to pay our entire share of it. And, and I think that's a problem because there's, there's no verification that goes there. And so that, that's just, that's an example, there's some, there's some other very nitty gritty items, uh, but those are the, those are the large items. That stepped out to be in that draft in twenty eighty.
Thank you.
Well, for the sake of the agenda and, and the next conversation, you know, it sounds like there, there might be a couple of folks comfortable at seven fifty. If that helps influence your guys' and then, and we can continue a conversation, um, about putting it on as a referendum item. Does that sound alright to folks?
As far as what, tell them, or what we're working on, or what, I guess, what are you seeing, or sorry?
You've got two folks up here that are comfortable with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think there's a motion here, I haven't heard one, um.
And you meant when you took it directly, if you took it directly random?
No.
No, you mean seven fifty, you're, you're pushing, you're pushing to a seventy three.
Yeah, that, I'm, I'm, that's, that's a stretch for me, but I can get there, um, of seven fifty from reserves. That is not a motion, that is not, right, that, that is not a board action, just publicly stating, it sounds like you've got two. Folks that would be supportive of that dollar amount at this point, if that helps influence your decisions as you get to planning. And as you continue a conversation on twenty eighty, great, if it doesn't, sorry, that's the best that we could, I think we're gonna be able to get to a consensus today. But I think it could at least influence.
So, obviously we need to, we're kind of twenty eighty, what, what else do you need from us to, to I guess get, go around and answer? I just wanna make sure I know what we need.
Yep.
Going forward to.
I guess I need to know, um, if we're in at seven fifty, are we getting what we need, is everybody getting what they need out of it?
Yeah.
Um, at that level.
Yeah. How that impacts the, the, the scale of the money.
Sounds like.
The terms of the twenty eighty, all of those things, um, but because it's not bond eligible for us, it's. A little harder to go it.
Yeah, no, I would buy, get that, and I.
Yep.
Appreciate where you guys are, just wanna make sure we know what we need to do. Going forward to reach a resolution.
Do you all have any other, any further?
I'm still trying to think how we help them further if it was through the years, I just, being hammered at, you gotta. Keep looking ahead for funding projects, if there was a way of doing something down the road and like Michelle's, I, I understand that just. I wanna do more, I just don't know how to do it, I, it's, that's frustrating.
That's the big thing, we need, they're getting their building one way or the other, we're gonna need ours if we're not in on this, then obviously we gotta circle back and. Come up their own, unfortunately, no, that's gonna be more than seven fifty, but.
Uh, is it possible in two weeks, we could have an answer on the twenty eighty, see a chance, draft of that, where we can make a final decision in two weeks?
Uh, Mike, if, if two weeks are realistic timeline that, from the resolution of twenty eighty?
I, I think it is, but, you know, if, if we haven't reached something that's agreeable to change. If it's in the board, you say that, uh, the way that it is, uh, but one way or the other, I think two weeks is enough time.
Okay.
Good.
Nice six.
And then is that also enough time for the Michelle conversation to remember that you could?
Yeah.
More clarification on that?
Yeah. Okay, well, unless there's anything else on it. I'd say a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Ever say aye? If you ever say aye.
Alright.